Today is the fourth of December 2019. My name is Pete Pickos. To my left is Larry Murphy.
Leslie Matthews.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
And tonight we have an agenda that has gotten modified a little bit, but what we're going to start off with is we have a couple candidates for open planning board seats and Martha will let you do the introductions.
All right. First, we have Mary Stone, who has submitted her resume. It's in your, it's in your packet. Did you, did you get that?
It's out of the one.
Okay, I got this from tonight, but I didn't receive anything prior. Who has expressed interest in filling our full, full member seat.
Welcome.
Hi.
Martha's been very helpful. So, would you, what would you like to know about?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So, well, we've had an opportunity to, we have your resume. It looks very impressive. It looks like you've been doing a lot of things throughout the years that would be beneficial with insight and experience in dealing with projects and developments.
It'll be a submission of a special permit renewal application.
So, tell us a little bit about why you'd like to join our board here.
Thirty-five Donfield Road, owner applicant is Jennifer Ford, Seacoast K nine. So, this will just be a submission of a, of the application and so pretty straightforward. We won't be having any discussion. It'll just be a submission.
Any other discussions or proceedings? Actually, I need to have all of this. Because I was very important with Boston Globe and doing work in New York, I didn't have a lot of time to get involved in the community, but I should know.
No, I think basically as, as we've discussed, this is the special permit renewal application because the original term is for thirteen months. And I think that's pretty much the same material as the first one in terms of narrative and the application for what's, what's been, what's being done now and what the proposal is going forward.
And there was a master plan that was in the works.
So, I did review the draft. I, this came in this morning, so I will be honest. I haven't really looked at it, but if there are questions, we can flush those out before, um, special hearing, when the hearing opens. So, I think the two things that need to be done tonight, one is to accept the application and the second is to set the public hearing date and time.
Just remember, um, to try to work with the town.
So, I'll entertain a, a motion to accept the application.
And then there's another area of town that's more of a caller.
Second.
And so those actions of town often skew the merits of the development.
A favor? Aye. Okay, next, I'll accept the motion to, sort of, date and time.
So, we brought both sides of town together to try to work together to see what they want.
So, I know that in sort of communicating with Ben, the hope was to, since we shifted our meetings to October thirtieth and November thirteenth, to get it on the agenda for the October thirtieth.
So, it was really fun. We had a great time.
Hearing that night, which they're aware of, so it would, it would be after that because that's set for seven fifteen.
Most fortunate, they say they rose them up, which they wanted to blow the top off of and put them all in.
Oftentimes it's an hour.
And the residents in the area would have been so impacted and very negative way that, you know, we really stepped up and the whole town was together by day.
That's gonna be a combined hearing.
Um, I would set it for, that was seven fifty. I would set it for seven forty-five and if it goes beyond that, I'll just acknowledge that we have that and it will start a subsequent.
So, I would encourage a motion for a public hearing for this application for the thirtieth of October for seven forty-five.
Oh, for a public meeting at ten thirty, seven forty-five?
Long discussion. Which is multi-generational residential.
Aye, great. We'll see you then. Okay, thanks.
So, I will, Jenny, I'll get you the language for the public.
So, I guess my point is, I love New York. I love New York. I've lived in a lot of beautiful places and I gotta tell you.
Going on to old business, proposed zoning amendments.
Yeah, so, let's see, a couple things. There are a few things that we've talked about in the past that we need to move forward with. One was the request from, um, for selectmen, Jeff Walker in particular to, um, must review our wireless communications bylaw. And I have gotten Tracy the go-ahead to contact. Schedule. To contact the consultant who had, that I was in touch with to get a fee from them so that we can kind of start that process.
I don't know a lot about anybody. I really don't.
So, just, uh, have you agree with the discussion that we have?
Yep.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
So, basically, we tap consultant to help guide us through this.
Which means that if there's something that's very important to the town, I'll give it everything I have.
The consultant, Rich Dyer, or is coming over the.
Because I want to be in a town where there is a vision.
New England based.
Uh, they aren't, they, no, they are already based. It's, it's Massachusetts and sorry, it's just completely.
Where are you going? Why are you going here?
Nine hours, yes, and what needed space today. So, um, it's, they are.
I know it sounds very admirable, but I've seen it work.
So, are we required to get three votes from this or?
Uh, no, no, unless it comes in. And what I'll do is I'll get an estimate from them. If it's over thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars, then we'll have to, but I think, I think it's under, we can, we can go single source.
That's, it's a wonderful insight and we share your compassion and your desire and love for this community because we all, we all have that and I think that's why we're all here. Does anyone have any questions for Mary?
No, I don't. I'm speaking for myself. I think Mary would be a wonderful addition to the board.
So.
In agreement.
Super. Well, that being the case, what I would do is I'd entertain a motion for a recommendation to the selectmen to appoint Mary as a member to the planning board, which I think would be taken up at their next meeting.
I would so much.
All right. Any discussion?
Second.
Together to oppose to the selectmen by the beginning of February.
Aye, aye. Martha, you can carry that message.
Um, yes, I'll, I will get that every other, um, fell into the possibility, so I'll get that letter to her tomorrow and it will be on the agenda for the selectmen's meeting next Tuesday. So, if you're available on Tuesday to come and just introduce yourself to them, see if they have any questions.
Sure.
I mean, I think what they would need to do is review our system by reviewing the coverage in town. To the selectmen, same room. Um, the meeting starts at seven. There are two public hearings on Tuesday night, uh, one at seven fifteen and one at seven forty-five. So, I'm not quite sure where, where it would actually fit in the agenda, but I can let you know.
Okay. I'm supposed to be in.
All right, so we don't have to have a public hearing by February second. Just a vote to refer to the selectmen.
Correct. Correct, yeah. So, we're looking, according to the schedule, we're actually looking at the beginning of March. So, the language doesn't need to be finalized by, by the beginning of February, but we need to ask you to change your plans.
Okay, Mary.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, thank you.
With that schedule in mind, that's.
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate you very much. Yep.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. So, Woody, come on up.
Attempted a few times and it keeps kind of getting deferred.
We're doing good. How you doing today?
Good. My name's Woody Nash.
Pete Pickos. Larry Murphy.
Leslie Matthews.
So, Woody, I know you've been attending our meetings for, it seems, for some time and I know you've been watching and listening and we discussed very briefly your desire to come on board as our associate member. Fill these guys in on what your, what your interest is.
Well, I'm interested in the things that you guys do.
She's done some research on bylaws in the area that's gonna put together a table for us showing what the provisions are, those bylaws.
Been over most of the town at this point, you know, all the area, square area of the town. I have a strong construction background. I'm a, I'm a, basically a general contractor. And then I, I've done a lot of farming as well, many years and later years as well, so in between.
If we want to do it that way.
With the copper tree in between. And I just, I have a lot to learn with the terms and things. But I, I think the company does, working on, especially bylaws.
Early time consuming public hearings coming up.
Things that pertain to keep the town like it is now as opposed to.
One or two, whatever number of workshops just to focus on zoning, I think makes a lot of sense.
Change of things and.
Do we want to break into little groups?
I don't know. I don't know what else you want to know.
That's great. No, no, you don't know hot seat. Not at all. This is, it's the beauty of this type of town and this type of community is we can have a discussion like this in a non-threatening manner, you know, it's just, it's wonderful. That's what we're about. That's what the sport's cultivated.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here to, uh, be spiteful or anything.
And we are gonna be entering. That's wonderful. And I mean, you're connected with, with this community and you have been your whole life and that's, that's really significant and important because a lot of people.
The oldest families in town, right?
There's a lot of things happening in town over the years.
One of the oldest families in town, correct?
Scheduling issues, so probably makes sense to, to schedule our things now. Okay, do you want to take over the chairmanship right now?
No, I, that's the real hot seat.
All right, all right. Darn. So, don't worry about the terms. We, we all have a learning curve and Martha will, Martha will help with, you know, information and the things that are necessary and there's no question, there's no silly questions, you know, two and a half weeks.
Yes, believe me.
Yeah, no, I don't have a ton of experience in the board table like with you guys, but I have tons of things, just on small levels.
Well, the nice thing, well, with a board like this is if you can get people with varied backgrounds and various, you know, experience, I mean, your, your local knowledge of the community would be invaluable, you know, and, and as well as a construction background, something that I don't have, you know. So, yeah, I'm sure you have a lot to offer.
Twelve, twelve generations of historical knowledge.
I've seen a lot of, you know, I understand the layout of the land around where it's, where things are and what's wet, what's dry.
That's, that's, that's important.
Things like that. I don't know. I appreciate that we still have some open spaces down too.
Valuable commodity.
Not that any of it's a day drapone or anything.
Those are both Mondays.
I could be the one. I don't think so. Martha, where are we? We still, you still need a letter from Woody?
Um, yeah, just a brief letter of interest and, and resume background. So, if you can get that to me tomorrow morning, I can give it to Ellen for the selectmen's packet. Otherwise, we might have to wait for the recommendation. If you guys want to take a look and make a recommendation.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with entertaining.
I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I apologize for not getting that.
It's okay. It's okay. You've, you've been here a lot. You've been here a lot. I'd entertain a motion for a recommendation to the.
Motion to entertain Woody taking, uh, being appointed to the board through the, through the selectmen as the associate.
All right, discussion. All right, all favor? Wonderful. So, I'll get the information to Martha and then hopefully we can get the packet together and get it for the selectmen.
What I need to get to her.
Beautiful.
You can go online too. Woody, you can go online and they'll give you like this brief, um, way to fill out a resume real quick. It's just like filling in the blanks.
Yeah, I've got, I've got some chicken scratch on a piece of paper. I just need to type it into the thing.
Yeah, it'll kind of lay it out for you.
I sent an email out.
Question for you. Woody, you understand the role of the associate member, right?
Yes. Martha explained it to me. I'm sure there's some things that I'll learn about being in, but.
Communication.
I don't have a vote, but I have a poisoned opinion.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, and, and if he does, if appointed by the chair, you can sit on special permits and that type of, in a decision-making role.
Yeah, oh, yeah, if there was a, someone absent.
Sliding some new business.
So, do you want to discuss that, let's go, please?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. For, as you guys know, for each of the.
We were scheduled to have a continuation of a public hearing on special permit renewal for application for Seacoast K nine LLC, thirty-five Donfield Road, map forty-one. Owner Jennifer Ford, we received an email today from Ben Timman to Martha. Martha had a conversation with Ben and Ben submitted the following. Dear Martha, following up to our discussion, I understand as likely the board will not have four members present for tonight's continued hearing of Seacoast K nine's application for its continued special permit. Accordingly, we respect for a request to continuance until December eighteenth, twenty nineteen. Thank you. We're gonna just get one of those. I'm sorry, I didn't pass that out. Okay. Is there any discussion on that request?
So, for the benefit of Leslie, who didn't get the email, I goofed up and, and didn't post the public hearing that we were gonna have on the eighteenth for the amendment to the OSRD language. I'm assuming that it actually needs to be posted twice and we don't have enough time to do that. So, the benefit of that is that it does have enough seven fifteen time slot if, if the board wants to use that, but we will need to send up front another date for that public.
Well, that's just a regulation change anyway.
It's regulation change. It's not time sensitive and it was not a major change. So, perhaps we can discuss that. We'll need to discuss the January schedule because our first meeting is scheduled for New Year's Day, which I think we probably don't want to do.
I'm gonna think.
Well, let's take this first. Is everyone in agreement that we will continue this for the eighteenth of December?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any question? Is there any particular procedural, I mean, do we have to open the public hearing and move to continue or is it just?
It'll just be a continuance discussion?
I think it's just a continuance. We're not actually opening it. It's just continuing it.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah, because if it's open, then that invites discussion.
So, I would move to continue the public hearing at Seacoast K nine until seven fifteen P M. on December eighteenth.
Second.
Discussion?
Almost.
A favor? Thank you very much. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have an appearance by Adam True requesting an extension of a tripartite agreement for two fifty-five High Road subdivision. Come on up to Adam. All right, tonight. Not too bad. I know, it's kind of scary, isn't it? Well, we're one, one of our members who you would recognize, George Morse, just couldn't be here this evening. Yeah, so George's here.
I have a tripartite agreement here.
So, what am I, what am I suggesting you do is just bring our other board members up to, up to speed as to what took place and how we got here?
Sure. So, my name's Adam True and last year we started the development of two fifty-five High Road, taking a thirteen acre parcel subdividing into three parcels, to one acre lots and one roughly eleven acre lot, preservation restrictions to never be further developed and pretty much trying to preserve it like it was.
Was this definitive subdivision?
So, I'll have that on the agenda for next time. So, we've completed pretty much everything there now. It's the last house, which is my personal house.
If comments come back saying that there's some value for this parcel, they could vote to acquire it for the purchase price that's on the.
Surveyed the ASBILs and.
They transfer their right of first refusal.
We just now have to get all the big work together to get the tripartite agreement settled, but it lasted a while. I never saw it, did it?
Yeah, it expired, I think, on November twenty-second, so it just, it's just passed. So, it does need to be extended long enough to allow the project to be closed out. And this was the form of essentially performance guarantee for the project.
Right, and there's, there's a bank involved in it. Yeah, and it was the bank on the border from Central.
Yeah, they're already working on paperwork now. They sort of knew that was gonna happen. The guy was supposed to be doing one way vacation and.
Which bank is it?
And that's the one that actually had since the existing building.
And how much is the, how much are they on?
That was the one that had a question about that. And that's another.
And that's just to complete the roadways, basically. Is the other infrastructure completed?
Yeah, everything's done.
You just want topco limits on the road, is that?
It's already done.
And actually, there, there were a number of waivers that were granted. It's since it was a three lot subdivision, um, there was a waiver on the width of the right of way down to forty feet, I believe it was, and a gravel surface rather than paved asphalt surface. And the diameter of the turnaround at the end of the cul-de-sac was also reduced. And the fire, fire department, fire chief did allow that with the stipulation that the center of it be hardened so that they could drive the fire trucks directly over instead of having to actually make the radius.
So, what, what's left to be done?
Uh, just paperwork, I think.
Yeah, basically, we need, Adam wants to start the closeout process, so we need to get the ASBILs so they can be reviewed by, by Joe. And once, you know, once he and the board have signed off on that, the tripartite agreement can, can be released. Basically, it's not, it's not a road that's gonna be accepted by the town. It will remain a private road. There's a homeowners association.
And town council will review that or has reviewed that?
Um, town, it was reviewed at the time, although we had different council at the time, but might not be bad to, to review that just to make sure that everything's, you know, in order, um, as well as have council review the tripartite agreement extension when it's ready.
So, this is basically informational for the board tonight, just so folks know what's going on.
Well, you need a vote?
You know, I think at this point, since, since there is no document that's in front of the board right now, I think, you know, I asked Adam to come in anyway, just to kind of fill you all in on and sort of start, start the process, make the request orally. But if you think it'll be ready for the eighteenth, it might make sense then to, to have you on the agenda again for that night with the formal request and hopefully we'll have a chance to review it before that date, if that sounds.
Makes sense. I mean, I don't see.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it since to see exactly how they're doing it. It was, you know, kind of broken into six lots.
Not this time?
No, I don't think so. And just, it was a, it was just a rig of the definitive subdivision approval. It was not an OSRD, so.
All right, Adam. So, I guess we'll see in a couple weeks, okay? Very good. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. All right, moving along on our agenda, our financial reports for October and November. So, we have the payable warrants for the town planner and planning administrator, P R twenty-eight for pay period ending ten, twelve, nineteen, for P R twenty-nine for pay period ending ten, twenty-six, nineteen, P R twenty-ten for pay period ending eleven, nine, nineteen, and P R twenty-eleven for pay period ending eleven, twenty-three, nineteen. Planning board expense invoices of Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad for ten twenty-one, nineteen, Verizon Wireless Planning I Board iPad for eleven eighteen, twenty nineteen, payments for engineering review escrow account for just Markey, Newbury Golf Center site inspections of ten thirty-one, nineteen. So, again, every month we must read into our record the financial reports. Any questions on that?
So, basically what they're doing is they're taking.
Hey, moving along, old business. Chapter sixty-one A Lynn, notice of intent to sell two seventy-seven High Road, planning board recommendations, Martha.
All right, so we're kind of down to the wire now. The, uh, the selectmen are holding their public hearing. The notice of intent to sell the chapter land, uh, two seventy-seven High Road, which is approximately five point five, six acres out of the six point nine four plus or minus. And the selection will ultimately have to decide whether to exercise its right of re, first refusal, which means that it would vote to, the board would vote to acquire the land, but would have to meet the one point six billion dollar price tag that's in the purchase and sale agreement. They could vote to assign the right of first refusal to a nonprofit group such as Essex County Green Belt, um, who would also have to meet the sales price. Or essentially waive its right of first refusal and essentially give their permission for the sale to go forward. I've included in your packets two, um, two sample letters and services and get these out sooner and wasn't able to. These were from, one was from two fifty-five High Road, which is the one that Adam True was just here for because that land is in chapter and the other is for three twenty-three R High Road. In both of these cases, um, the board, um, felt that those parcels didn't have potential to serve municipal needs, um, but did see that there could be some conservation value. Um. So, if the board felt appropriate, uh, we could draft a similar letter to send to the selectmen preparation for next Tuesday's public hearing, um, but we haven't discussed it, so.
Well, realistically, even if we decided that, that, that there was some value to the property for municipal purposes, is that the standard, am I quoting that correctly?
That portion of the trail has been designed to twenty-five percent already.
But I can't imagine the town's in a position to pony up one point five million at this point.
By Stan Tech and their predecessor, Facebook for Thornbyke, which was acquired by Stan Tech.
I mean, what, what you, what you on the spot, Martha, what's your feeling? I mean, leaving aside the purchase prices is something that the town would, could benefit by owning.
No, I don't, I don't see that there's known overriding municipal need for it for the town's purposes. I do see that there, you know, there could be benefit in maintaining it as, as open space, conservation land, primarily because it's, you know, it's, it's a parcel that is on the lower green and has, you know, has value in that sense. But I, I don't see that a nonprofit like Essex County Green Belt would be in a position to pay one point five, one point six million dollars for it either. Neighborhood groups who might have an interest in trying to pull it together in which if there were, Essex County Green Belt would help them with the process. I did have a discussion. With someone from Essex County Green Belt about that, but nobody's approached.
They would have to move pretty quick.
They would have to move quick, yeah.
What is the cutoff date?
Um, January tenth, I think. The board has a hundred and twenty days from the essentially postmark date of the notice of intent to sell.
Well, I think the feeling is probably from a municipal standpoint, it might be very difficult to have a need for that, but I think, as you mentioned, you know, from an open, open space standpoint, it's historical tie to the green, uh, to the culture and fabric of the town. It would be wonderful to maintain that in some manner.
Confused by this because it seems, you know, sort of jumping in without relation to any of the discussions that have happened so far or work that's been done.
Explore that. I wouldn't think that would be an option. So, I think drafting, uh, a response to the, to the, kind of in that puzzle piece has been presented to you.
Okay, so similar to what we had.
No, it's the same route.
That makes sense, yeah.
Same route, but the concern about the Parker River.
Okay.
You know that the historical commission is really.
That was certainly one which could, you know, depending on what the alternatives analysis comes up with, that could.
Yeah, understandable, but at the same time, six million? Yeah, that's a, that's a big nut crack for the town for, you know, something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. And then the, the parcel with the house and the farmhouse is another five hundred. That's not, not part of the equation here for the town's decision. That's off the table now. So, the question is how to find a feasible off-road route to get from here up through Everstop and Road.
Times so, so close.
And I know there are.
Ending needs as well.
Yeah. And there are a number of the butters down there, or residents of Cottage Road that are concerned about the impact of five more houses on, on the wells and all of, all of that, but.
So, they can probably stand.
It has the frontage to support the lots and that's.
What about a, increasing the number of people that are gonna be using the road? Will a traffic survey have to be done prior to that?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, it was approved as, the lots were approved as approval not required because it had the frontage on the road, so there's really no additional, um, sort of approval.
That, that was the one that was some question about the farmhouse, right?
Yeah, the setback.
Uh, yeah, correct. Creating, this is what I'm trying to, uh, not conformity. That's the one I went to court, right?
Yes, yeah. And the decision was in favor of the property owners.
But that wasn't the case with other communities. Okay. I would ask that you draft that.
Okay. Do other communities want to take a motion to?
A motion? Oh, I would love to entertain a motion to. A motion? Oh, I would love to entertain a motion to.
If I can remember at all, it's the item that we asked to direct the town planner to draft a letter to the board of selectmen indicating that the subject property.
I'm looking for the right, two seventy-seven.
Two seventy-seven.
Yeah. Yep, that's what I'm, that's what I'm searching for.
Right, sort of on the second page of the.
Does not have potential to serve municipal need, we therefore do not recommend the town exercise its right of first refusal, but if. We do recommend this blackman vote to assign the town's right of first refusal to a qualified nonprofit land trust or other conservation organization, should one be interested in purchasing the property.
Thank you for that motion. We're just gonna, is that, okay, great.
Like you said in the other letter.
And we're the discussion, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate that motion. All righty, continuing on our old business, our preliminary subdivision plans for sixty-eight Green Street, owner applicant Green Street Realty Trust, the Jackman trustee.
And I have received, I, I know that the engineers are still working on some revisions to that plan, the board did vote on the extension of the timeframe within which to take action on this, and I've received nothing else.
So for this portion of it, we have a memorandum of understanding Georgetown, they're taking the lead.
What timeframe did we give them?
Um, I'd actually have to check my notes, I think we might have given them until January.
There's no sort of town.
The board extended the timeframe to December twenty-third, on the assumption that there could be some discussion and action on the eighteenth, and that would give time to file it. So if another, if we haven't received anything, then there needs to be another extension.
But it's been a very, very, very long and complicated process, which has been going on.
Continuing on, I'm looking at new business and I see the word none next to that, is that correct?
Um, I guess, under new business, we could talk about the January schedule.
Let's talk about that then. So, as we look at our calendar, the first Wednesday of the month for January does fall on January first. Which I'd be more than willing to come in and if folks like to have a meeting that day, but I would understand that there might be some folks that might know how to do that.
I think the building will probably be closed.
Closed, and the heat will be turned off, so let's look at the different schedules. So we could potentially do the eighth and the twenty-second, or we could do, piggyback the eighth and the fifteenth, or we could do the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth.
Or just keep the fifteenth and have only one meeting in January, which might be tough given what's happening.
For some reason, the concomitant would be on the fourteenth, my calendar.
License renewals, uh, national green.
The concomitant is probably on the twenty-first, because they are the, the Tuesday of the month.
I have to get this, I got it up to date here. So what's the flavor of the board, would we like to do two meetings in the month of January, or would we like to do one meeting in the month of January, how does that calendar look for activities, Martha?
Um. Decided to do it, it was suggested by Eric Urschewa on the voting committee to seriously amend the metric for the town hall advisory committee.
Yeah, it wasn't actually, it was more to establish a metric for the advisory committee, you know, so try to set up some objective ways to evaluate their different options that they, the committee might.
Since the decision will have to be drafted, there'll probably be, you know, some carryover of the C K nine.
Renovate the existing building, renovate and add on to the existing building.
I would think the eighth and the twenty-second would be my suggestion, because the eighth is three weeks after our December eighteenth meeting, so you don't think you want to go too much beyond that, do you? And I mean, if, if January looks light, then we can always cancel the twenty-second.
Sounds good to me.
Then I think we have our forecast, it'll be the eighth and the twenty-second.
Kind of solidified, do you want to take a motion and a vote, or do you?
Um, if you think that that's necessary.
I don't know that it's really necessary.
Okay, good, then we'll just leave it as our discussion points. Larry's been doing motions and.
I, the last one exhausted me.
Well, it was tiring, two paragraphs long. Okay, anything under, else under that new business, I'm liking the design of this meeting tonight.
No, I think that's it.
All right, then, we're just going to slide right into the town.
And then we have our workshop on Monday.
We do have our workshops on Monday, so I will get that posted first thing tomorrow morning.
And just for folks, we will be having a zoning workshop on Monday, December ninth, at one o'clock.
Yes.
That'll be here in this room, very good.
We brought in about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think. And Brewster was able to.
All right, town planner report.
So, oh, and just a reminder, on, on Tuesday, not only is there the selectmen's public hearing about two seventy-seven High Road, but there is the continuation of the Golf Center public hearing as well.
Are we on?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Oh, and I think everybody's.
That's the eighteenth?
Uh, no, the tenth, next Tuesday.
Oh, there's the tenth, okay.
Yeah.
And that is scheduled for seven fifteen.
Um, actually, seven forty-five, the.
Conservation Committee, next meeting will be fifteenth of October.
Two seventy-seven is at seven fifteen.
Yeah, I don't have any of that report, same thing, the meeting that is the night after our next meeting, I haven't seen an agenda yet, so.
Very good.
One question is.
Well, I had a very nice sixteen celebration.
Participate in some fashion.
So, I'm sorry, Martha, that's the tenth, where on, for what time?
Uh, seven forty-five is the Golf Center.
How it's changed and their initiatives and what they're going to be doing going forward. Some nice commendations from, from the video of Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito congratulating the commission.
Very good, okay, town planner report.
Um, so a couple of things, just to let you all know, we did submit two MVP action grants for the current grant round. One for the Orchard Street culvert replacement, and the other is the, to get funding for a cost benefit analysis regarding municipal services to Plum Island. And in the light of climate change and sea level rise, and trying to forecast how long it makes sense to continue to provide those. We've got a strong, strong team of sort of financial analysis people and community engagement people, and, and, you know, I think if, if it, if we are awarded the grant, I think it could be very, as far as we know, nobody has done anything like it, and it could be very helpful for other coastal communities who are trying, you know, grappling with these questions of providing services, maintaining services. How long does it make sense, what, you know, what's the short term and long, long term management plan?
Very interesting.
So we'll see, I think the, I think the awards are going to be announced this month.
Who came up with that concept?
Um, there was a group of us, kind of a subgroup of our municipal vulnerability, we, we started out, actually, the original concept was to talk about options for maintaining access to Plum Island, you know, across the turnpike. But as we started to talk about it, it became clear that we couldn't really look at that in a vacuum, we really needed to look at it in a much more global sense, because if you're going to spend millions of dollars on access, how long is it even going to make sense to have that access? So we had a number of meetings trying to, to kind of refine it, Ellie Baker from Horsley Witten helped us, she was instrumental in putting the whole grant application together, and pulling the team together. But it was, you know, Chief Riley and Chief Janvren and Doug and I, and a couple of other people, John O'Connell and Tracy, and Ellie, and one person from Newbury Port's MVP group.
Smart, smart thinking, we have to really think outside that box because it has changed, that's great.
Yeah, so, it'll be, it'll be really interesting, it'll be probably quite a bit of work if we get it, we've got a pretty substantial in-kind match, so we'll see, we're hopeful. And it would actually be for the remainder of this fiscal year and then go into the next fiscal year, so it's a two-phase application. The other thing I wanted to report on is, Borrego is ready to move forward with the installation of the solar project at one thirty-six Main Street. There's still some bits and pieces that they need to pull together in order to actually get the permit, but they, I think they've, they've submitted the building permit application. Two major things, one is the tax agreement, and the other is the conservation restriction, which is going to be placed on about eighty acres. And that was one of, both of those were conditions of the special permit that was issued a year and a half ago, May of twenty eighteen. So the, I just received a draft of the conservation restriction this afternoon from Essex County Greenbelt, who will be the holders, it's being reviewed by the state right now, and so that will be on our agenda for next, the next meeting on the eighteenth to review that, and I will be sending it to town council for review as well.
Just for the conservation restriction?
Uh, for the conservation restriction, yeah.
So if the special permit's been issued, then what's our role going forward?
Um, well, that was one of, well, there were a number of conditions, it was, it was a very long drawn out process in getting the special permit finalized, and there were a number of conditions, and the conservation restriction was one of them, so the board does need to review that to make sure that it's consistent with what the intent was. There, well, just a little quick background, it was, the Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions, which was appealed by the Courtney Drive of Butters, and so went to DEP, they issued a superseding order. So the project is now proceeding on the basis of that superseding order, as well as the special permit from the planning board. There were some assumptions made at the time about soil conditions that formed the basis for the way the stormwater management is being treated. So one of the conditions is to, to have soil testing done when they start digging the trenches out there, and Joe, our engineer, will be part of that. The other major aspect of it was ensuring that the project will be screened completely from the Butters on Courtney Drive.
At all times.
At all times, from the moment the installation goes on, or goes up. So to that end, I was contacted a couple of weeks ago by Borrego, whose landscape architect has recommended that those plantings actually go in now. And I had a lot of questions about that, discussed it with our tree warden, and Pete. And after meeting with their landscape architect and the person who's going to be actually doing the installation, they provided a strong enough argument for doing it now, and it was basically up to me to kind of approve the, the plan. So they are going to proceed, but with the understanding that it is completely at their risk.
Or do they use the arbor viti?
No, they're not actually, arbor viti are very tasty for the deer, so they're using a combination of deciduous, of various deciduous trees, white pine and, yeah, white pine and, and spruce and some other things, as well as, or coniferous trees, as well as a number of deciduous trees. I questioned the deciduous trees, because obviously the leaves will go down, but their explanation was that they will provide some lower level branching, because they're, they're screening, because the branches are very dense. They're also planting a number of perennials, so they're looking at screening, but they're also doing things which may not necessarily have screening value, but do have edge habitat value. And if it doesn't.
These are going to have to be large trees that are going to.
Well, they're going to have, and they had suggested smaller ones than, than the ones that they originally proposed, and we've gotten them back up to some larger ones. But what they've said is that the larger trees actually don't do as well when they're planted, and the root ball, because it's very bony soil, the root balls, if they're too big, they're actually not going to be able to plant them very well, and they won't take. So their argument for putting them in now is that they will, if they're planted in the spring, the conditions could get dry very quickly, and they might not thrive, and their experience is that they will thrive, they'll have a better chance of getting planted, even now with the snow on the ground. They're going to be mulching them, they'll be bringing in supplemental soil, as well as, as different kinds of additives to the soil, and.
Are they going to put anything in that's going to be a quick grow tree that will provide fast, you know, like a poplar or anything of that nature?
There are no poplars, I don't, I didn't, I should have brought the list up.
Just while the evergreens are growing, that they grow faster, you can take them out when the evergreens are, reach a better maturity.
Yeah.
So the challenge is they have to screen this from start.
Yeah, that's.
And as Martha said, this is their plan, and this is their responsibility in how they facilitate that.
I guess if they're doing it at their own risk, that's.
And did they, do I remember something about changing the height, uh, no, they were going to change the location of where the berm was going to start.
Well, what happened, during the course of approval, the, the panels got pulled farther away from Courtney Drive.
Right.
And so originally the screening was going to be kind of right on the top of a ridge.
Okay.
And what's happened is that some of it is now downslope, but they're, they're going to be taking that into account. And it's still on the ridge at the place where it's most sensitive, there's one property in particular, that when we did the mockup, we could see the panel from, but the panels were actually farther back now, so.
How deep do they have to be buried for the panels, for the trenches, just knowing that there's so much ledge out there?
My understanding was the, they don't go deep with the, the bracing material, the bracing structure that holds the, the panels in place, they don't have to dig down.
They're drilling, they're drilling those in.
And so, and so there isn't concrete pouring and that sort of stuff.
Right, and the panels themselves, I think the back of the panels is like ten to, ten to fifteen feet or something like that.
If I understand this location, the, the panels themselves would be pointed away from Courtney Drive, won't they?
Right, Courtney Drive will be seeing the side of the panels, essentially, and the supporting structure.
They won't be seeing anything of the panels.
Yeah, I just wonder if glare is an issue, you know?
Right, right, and they'll be facing away.
Yeah.
To that end, though, the other thing that, one of the other conditions was that the back of the panels be painted gray. And there was discussion at the time that they could either come in gray or white, but apparently all the panels that are being manufactured now are backed in white, and so they're going to be coming before the board to get a modification of that condition.
So it might be helpful to circulate to the board the current conditions, just so everybody has a historical, and this was a long process, this was a couple of years in duration?
Um, yeah, the initial public hearing lasted for fifteen months, and then they withdrew without prejudice because it was before DEP at that point, and the super, it took a while for the superseding order to be issued. So once the superseding order was issued, they came, they resubmitted, and I think that one only lasted about three months.
So it's.
Hmm, it's been a history there.
Cultivating for a while.
Right, right, so I will circulate the conditions and a reduced version of the, the most current plan, and I'm happy to go over it with either of you, if you want to take a look at it.
It's in my neighborhood.
Yeah, not far.
No.
Yeah.
Will be a significant amount of acreage of tree clearing?
It's twelve acres of tree clearing. And the other thing, they're going out, actually, they're going to start staking the limit of work on Monday, the ninth, and intending to start staking locations of trees at about the same time. One thing I, I asked them to make sure is that they don't actually end up putting trees where the stormwater trenches are supposed to go. So it's really the onus is on them for the coordination as well.
Good, good. Well, thank you, thank you. Um, anything else on the town planner's report?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay, liaison reports, board of selectmen?
Okay, the board of selectmen, uh, received five hundred and twenty-five dollars in donations for the World War II memorial, um, sidewalk, which was greatly appreciated by everybody and, um, excuse me. In the chapter three sixty-nine acts of eight, nineteen eighty-two, section one, determination of percentage of tax levy to be borne to each class of real property for fiscal twenty twenty, there's basically no change. They approved to have in the, um, the dog license and the parking permits in the, when they send out the, uh, tax bills at the beginning of the year. Um, there was talk about Plum Island and the, uh, bathhouse, uh, police annex and discussion about, uh, how to move forward on that. It might come up at, uh, regular town meeting to see if they can get the money for that. Let's see, we received a grant to bring technology in for cyber protection. We received on eleven twenty, a ladder truck and in January, the pumper arrives. And there'll be thirteen, there'll be thirteen educational protection for the, um, Cyber Protection Act. And the golf center apparently did not stabilize the grounds for erosion during the last recent storms. They're about six weeks behind schedule, um, so they're going to stay on a controlled oversight. And, uh, the recreational committee would like to put a skating rink at the ball field at the town library. And that's it.
Excellent. Um, conservation commission, we, uh, met on the nineteenth, unfortunately, I just looked at my folder, I don't have my notes, it was a couple hours in duration, I'm trying to think if there's anything. It was a pretty smooth meeting, there weren't any, uh, big concerns from our perspective, so I'm gonna leave it at that. CBA?
I, I have nothing, we haven't met since, uh, we last reported.
Excellent. MVP C?
Um, unfortunately, neither Pete nor I could go to the November meeting. Um, I do understand from, um, uh, talking with, uh, one of the MVP C staff members that there were some changes made in the current makeup of the, um, officers for the MVP C commission. But I haven't really gotten any other reports. And I did attend the quarterly planners meeting today and there's, um, large focus today on, on various, um, bike, uh, initiatives. You know, bike, bike share, bike trail kinds of things. That was about it.
Okay.
We have had a few people contact me recently, uh, with concerns for the rail trail that's possibly will come through their neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So I'll just, you know, gather the information that way and submit it to you for, or have them write their letter to you on what their concerns are.
That would be good because they are, um, they finally reached the Georgetown north and our section of the trail.
These are people that have walked the National Grid, um, area and feel that it's not gonna be conducive for their parti- particular neighborhood and that's Forest Street mostly.
Hmm, okay. Um, yeah, if, if they could get in touch with me, there is gonna be a public hearing, um, but I don't have a date for that yet. I think MasDOT will be scheduling that.
Okay.
Um
Are they driving this mostly on MasDOT, if I remember, or no?
And they're, y- y- yeah, they're essentially in the driver's seat.
Yeah.
It's the very long history.
Right, right, right.
Um, and I think in that, that route going along the National Grid right of way is the one that's been on the books for a very long time. So, um, at this point, um, well, a couple of things. One is there, I'm still trying to, to, uh, find out whether there was an alternative route looked at just because of an endangered species habitat along, along the river.
That was one of the things that I was, had been brought up to me as well, that they had heard there was endangered species, what, do you have to know what it is?
So, um, turtles.
Turtles, okay.
Um, so, um, the, um, I think, uh, the state biologist is supposed to be coming up with some sort of a mitigation plan. And I know there are others that had concerns just along, because of the proximity along the Parker River and if the, um, trail is paved, the potential for asphalt products or petroleum going into the river and that kind of thing.
Right.
So that's, that's something that has been raised with them as well. But yeah, if you wanna have people get in touch with me directly or forward, you know, forward their comments to me, that would be
Okay.
That would be good.
Excellent. Does anyone have anything else? I would entertain a motion for a trip.
Let's go for it.
Few seconds and any discussion?
Then a second.
Okay, rightful. Thank you very much, everyone.